We'll call to order this the Monday, May 12th, 2025, meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Prayer, please?
Our heavenly Father, we come before you just one more time again to thank you for this beautiful day, thank you for this little town that we serve, thank you for the many people that we serve in, and we ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Chief?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noel, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager. Pamela Samples.
Here.
Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on April 28th, 2025.
So moved.
Sorry, is there a motion, is there a second? I'll second it, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
We were getting there. Any abstaining?
Here.
Okay. So I'm not sure, Darla.
I, I think we've talked about this before, and I think you can go ahead and approve the minutes if you want to, even though you weren't here. If you, if you're not comfortable doing it, then just roll it over to the next meeting.
Next to pay accounts payable vouchers and payable vouchers.
So moved. Second.
Motion's second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now, any abstaining? Okay. There are no resolutions this evening, however, there's one item that was left off the agenda inadvertently, and that is the opening of the community crossing grant bid. So with council's, with council's permission, we'll move to that first.
Have that information anywhere?
It's just the bids.
Okay, okay.
There were two responses. The first one is E and B paving. The second response is for milestone paving, and the bid is $277,571.80.
As normal, do you want to take this under advisement so you can review it?
Please.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we take this under advisement for legal to review it.
Second.
Motion's second, roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we'll move down to, again, there are no resolutions, there's one ordinance on first reading this evening, that ordinance is 2025-13 to set fees for the rental of the Ellisville Heritage Center.
It's my understanding that the Parks Board made a decision as to the fee for the rental of the Ellisville Heritage Center. I made it into an ordinance because, under the current town code, there is an ordinance that sets the rates for the shelter house, so to be consistent, I also made this an ordinance. However, I suggest to council, it's just a, an idea, that it consider repealing 9510, which discusses reserving shelter houses and the fees, and just let the Parks Board set all the fees for the shelter house, the Heritage Center, and let them do it. But if not, you have an ordinance before you that sets the fee for the shelter house, I mean, for the Heritage Center.
House Counsel, want to proceed with this?
Well, where does the money go? Does that go into the Parks budget? Did they collect for it?
Do we want to entertain this and move forward with an ordinance, or would you prefer to repeal this and just leave this to the Parks Board authority?
I would much rather have us amend an ordinance, that way we have another eye on it, any fees or increases.
Okay. Do you want to discuss what's currently on the table? I mean, it's only on first reading, do you want to review it, and then we'll come back in two weeks?
I think the fees seem reasonable.
And it's going to be on the town's website for the public, correct?
Correct, exactly, sir.
Okay, then we will return to that in two weeks. Moving to ordinances on second reading this evening, the first ordinance is on second reading is ordinance 2025-06, establishing rates and changes, I'm sorry, charges for the use of and services rendered by the water work system of the town of Ellisville, Indiana, and repealing all ordinance and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
This is second reading on this particular ordinance, or actually, I think it's the, the third reading because the council tabled it at its last meeting, but the I U R C approved these rates back on February 7th, 2024. This is phase two of the rates that were approved by the I U R C, and phase two of the rates were discussed when phase one was implemented about a year ago this time.
This has been actually about a two-year process, is it not, from when we started to today?
Yeah, and, and to be clear, when the I U R C approved our rates, we put in motion entering them into the billing system, and so May 1st was the first bill that it went out. What you're approving is the rate structure, so it matches the ordinance, or it matches, matches what the I U R C approved. It's slightly less than what you originally approved when we started the process.
All right, council comments for this. Is there public comments from this within the chamber? And you have to help me out online, if there's anybody there. Okay, and back to council for either action and or more comments or discussion.
Well, if there's no discussion, I'd like to move to approve ordinance 2025-06, establishing rates and charges for the use of services rendered by the water work system of the town of Ellisville, Indiana, and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we have no old business, so we're on to new business, the first of which is release of bonds for prominence place subdivision, phases one, two, three, and four.
There's a ordinance on second reading. For chapter 130.
I skipped that. We'll go back, ordinance 2025-12, to amend chapter 130 of the Ellisville Town Code to allow the use of firearms within the corporate limits of the town under certain conditions.
I made some changes from the first version because there were some things that I had included that were already included under the Indiana Code, so for example, the written landowner permission requirement is already covered under Indiana Code 14-22-10-1. Additionally, at the state level, there's no minimum requirement about how far a hunter has to be from a habitable building, and it was suggested to me that a distance requirement might make it difficult for the officers, the police officers who are enforcing this to enforce it, and so I also struck the acreage minimum. But to hunt or target shoot on your property, it still has to be zoned agricultural, the landowner or the individuals participating have to abide by all rules established by the Department of Natural Resources, and the parcel on which the hunting or target shooting is taking place cannot be, be, cannot be used by the owner as a bed and breakfast, short-term rental, or for any other commercial purpose or use which required a special exception.
Questions or comments from council?
So Darla, there's no minimum lot size on this?
No.
As long as it's zoned agriculture.
Correct.
They're allowed to target practice and.
Hunt.
Hunt.
That's target shoot.
And again, keep in mind that if it's not in a safe area, that would get you into criminal sanctions, this is simply an ordinance, it's a civil sanction.
Okay.
Did you have further, Dan?
No, just clarifying that.
With council's permission, I would like to offer one amendment striking the words "similar weapon" under 130.01, Shooting Weapons Within the Town, Section A. It currently says, as it's proposed, "It shall be unlawful for any person or persons to shoot or cause to be shot, any firearm, BB gun, pellet gun, or similar weapon within the town of Ellis, within the town unless otherwise provided in this section." Similar weapon is where I'm hung up, because there are those things that are not weapons that are designed to, for sport, to be used, paintballs, whatever else, that could be construed under this ordinance, and I would like to remove that wording. I'm not real happy about BB gun being in there, but I can understand why we wouldn't want to include it, but to go any further than that, I'm just not comfortable with.
I agree with that, but do we want to remove the BB gun part?
I could see neighbors here with, with animals around in tight confines, you know, some of our neighborhoods are very small setbacks.
Well, if they're using firearms, that would even be.
Right, but BB gun, I mean, again, it can do damage inadvertently, I guess.
But I'm saying if they're going to do fire, damage, they'd do it with the firearm worse than the BB gun.
You would think, yes.
And what's the difference, here's my ignorance, between a BB gun and a pellet gun?
Pellet gun typically functions at a higher velocity, typically uses a special projectile as opposed to just a round ball.
Okay.
Typically. And to be honest with you, pellet guns are used pretty universally in Europe to hunt with.
So would this cover like crossbows, things like that, too?
It does not.
So.
Doesn't.
This is a projectile weapon, it's definition within Indiana Code. Because you have like airsoft and things like that, that again, are designed for.
I'm okay if we just say firearm.
That's.
I mean, I hate for some seven-year-old with a BB gun to get sideways with this.
Right. Do you want to strike BB gun?
I just think leave it, any firearm, and strike within, from that to within the town limits.
I think we should leave pellet, because they can potentially be.
Okay.
More injurious than.
Like I said, I defer to you on that, so.
And, you know, just because my son has one of these, he's actually got a semi-automatic BB gun that is, fires at high velocity, I mean, you could bring down small animals with it, so I'm not sure we should take BB gun out, is what I'm saying.
Again, its range is fairly benign.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're not shooting across the backyard before it's going in the ground, whereas a pellet gun is a much higher velocity, and it can go pretty, pretty decent.
Yeah, I, I guess, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, but you do have BB gun, you can shoot your eye out.
I wanted to say it so bad, but I refrain from saying it.
I didn't.
Okay, Waldo, we found him, so let's move forward.
So is there a motion? With regard to a proposed amendment to paragraph A.
I'll make that motion that, that we strike from paragraph A, the words BB gun, and similar, or similar weapon, and leave the rest intact as it is.
I'll second.
Before we vote, is there any comments from the public in council or in chambers? Or still no one online, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. See none, we're back to council.
So there should be a vote on the amendment, and then vote on passage of the ordinance with the amendment.
Okay, so let's go for the amendment first, since we have a motion and second.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
And I'll make it, I move we pass ordinance 2025-12 as amended, an ordinance to amend chapter 130 of Ellisville Town Code to allow the use of firearms within the corporate limits of the town under certain conditions.
I'll second.
And whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we're down to new business, the release of bonds for prominence place subdivision, phases one, two, three, and four.
Family built construction is in progress for a common place, requesting to be released from the bonds for phases one, two, three, and four, which is the entire subdivision. Planning, street, and stormwater have been out there, there was a few things for street that needed corrected and has been done, so we're all in agreement that they can be released from their bonds, and then the subdivision will come into the town.
Any objections?
None.
Okay, questions or comments from council?
Just to be clear, all sidewalks are done?
Yes.
Since this affects residential area, any comments from the public? Still nobody?
No, sir.
Okay, back to council.
I'll make a motion to release the bonds for prominence place subdivision, phases one, two, three, and four.
Second.
Motion's second.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Communications proposal to include public relations and marketing by Fields and Company.
So this weekend. I sent email to all the board members, actually, I sent it Friday, laying out what the proposal for a communications person or entity would bring to the town, and so considering that we have not had a communications person for over a half a year, I thought it was time to take some action on it. Prior to having a communications person, I think last October is when we started, we, I had constant requests from board members, department heads, citizens, the chamber, it was a request only eclipsed by, when are you going to bring a restaurant to town? And so anyway, we had, I had a lot of requests for more communications for the citizens of Ellisville. Four or five years ago, maybe there wouldn't be enough, enough events going on in the town where we might have needed this, but as everybody knows, we're in a building boom, we're growing, we're trying to market ourselves, we work with the B E D C to market our properties and inventory that might make for a good business, or an industry, if you will. So anyway, I, I brought that proposal to you, Fields and Company has sent me a proposal, we also are working with them and the chamber and Main Street for a branding that, a branding process that will bring, something will bring to you sometime in the near future, and so after talking to Victoria Fields, who's here tonight to answer questions, we talked a couple times, and I'm, I'm pretty sure it's a good fit for us, and so with that said, any questions about the proposal? Hopefully, everybody read both my email and the proposal.
Questions from council?
I do. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but in your, when you sent us out the email, you said that was like for 2025, so is it going to be a different price for 2026? Is that $19.70 just for the rest of the year, is that for all year, or?
That's for this year, it's a, we'll finish out with a contract for 2025, and then we'll ask, you know, I assume if everything goes right, they'll want to work for us again, maybe, and, and, and that we'll want them to stay as well, I'm pretty sure we'll want them to stay as well, and hopefully, what we do in 2025 will bear out that it's a good idea, and it will indeed help the town move forward.
In the budget.
I just have more of a recommendation, and they're probably already thinking this way, on posting stuff, I would not have comments enabled, that way individual council members or members of the public can share it, and the town's not responsible for getting a back and forth, how does the council feel about that?
I agree.
Because if you have council, if you have comments on a Facebook or Instagram post, then there's an expectation, there's somebody asked a question on that post, they're going to get it back and forth, and I'm just thinking uniformly disable comments, because if you answer one and don't answer another, it's going to look like you're playing favors. And we can share them, and our stuff is, we need to, it's discussion.
We have a public forum that someone that.
Correct.
Really wants to ask a question and get an answer can do so, or they can email any or all of us separately.
Correct.
I just think keeping up with that is asking a little too much of anybody.
I would agree, especially if they're not familiar with the day-to-day runnings of the town. I try to be, but I don't know how many times I've had to reach out for Mike or Denise for questions as asked, I can't imagine, you know, for a third party, so what do we say with this? What do we?
It keeps us out of some potentially liableous situations.
Correct, because if you have comments on, you can't censor or delete any of them unless there's, I mean, there's a small window, I think you can, is that right, Darla?
Very small.
But, I mean, for the most part, it's the Wild West, so.
So for them, they won't answer comments, right?
They won't answer, I think comments are just shut off, there's no.
They're just going to tell what's going on, but they're not.
Correct.
But we can put it on our pages.
Correct.
You can, you just, they're not in a position necessarily to answer for a five-member council.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and actually, that was my concern, too, you know, how, how are they going to speak for me when William may have a different thought than I do? So I, I agree with that, that's a, a good, good thing, and one thing I'd like to add also, and I don't know if this is possible, maybe we can ask her, but I know that you'll be running things by Mike when you post it, if you could include all five of us, too, before you actually send something out, is kind of what I would like to see, too.
It may always be possible.
Right, right, but when it is, if it's something very controversial, that we should know about it, so I don't want blindsided, basically, someone runs into me at the store and says, what's going on here, you know, and it's like, I don't know what you're talking about, you know, and so that's something that I'd like to ask if you could do that, so.
Yeah, part of what we talked about is putting together a process for proactive communication, all those regular updates that need to go out, and then a process for reactive communication, and so there's probably a different level of review for each of those items, and we can determine that during the initial scope work discovery phase.
Okay. I think at the time, you probably set boundaries, or what we would like is later, as opposed to right now during the initial contract.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it was possible.
Sure.
What, what will you plan on?
Process and protocol will be organized by myself, Victoria, and her company, the next step, if you approve this, we'll have, have her bring her in and endure a department head meeting, and so I think they'll help with the back and forth, and eventually, it'll all come back to you, so I don't think anything we might do to begin with can't be changed or tweaked, and so, you know, your, your input will be important to what, you know, how this goes, how things go in the future.
And I will say, what I've learned, and I'm sure you have, too, the things you would think were controversial, aren't, and the ones that you think, oh, this is just a normal thing, all of a sudden it blows up, and you're like, why is this even an issue? So it'd be hard for them to get ahead of that, but I do see what you're saying, so we can tweak it once they start doing it.
If it's helpful context, my background, I was at Cook Medical for the first six years of my career, working on class three FDA, highly regulated devices, so a lot of my background is in regulatory space, so I would say I'm overly cautious, rather than firing from the hip, like I get things with you multiple times to make sure that everyone's good, so.
Further questions from council?
One other question, so what, what kind of resources would you be using to get this message out, or whatever we want out to the public?
You mean personnel or channels?
The channels that you'll be using.
Yeah, that would be part of the plan, so I think the last person who was supporting communications was really heavily focused on social media, but I think there's a huge opportunity to broaden beyond that, you think about the buckets of channels, there's paid media, earned media, which would be, you know, news coverage, old media, which would be things like the town website, and then shared media is social, and so the plan that we would put together, we would develop objectives for communication, and then figure out the right mix among those four buckets of channels, so part of the discovery process will be, what are all the ways that we could communicate to the people that we want to reach, and what are the best ways to do that? Probably a lot of it will be social, but there could be opportunities for physical signage, there could be opportunities for lots of different things.
Basically due diligence. Other questions for council? All right, thank you, ma'am. Further discussion or motions?
I do have one thing, Mike, are we doing this just to get out about Ellisville, or do you think this will help deter, you know how people put on their, like tonight, I didn't even know anything was on there, and then it come up about, I won't go into detail, what properties and stuff, you know, and people somehow found out, and then they were all riled up and everything, so you think this is, doing this to deter that, thinking if you get this information out there, people will know what's going on, and they won't like question?
Well, as I said in the email, if you let information that's not true, or correct, or controversial, if you, if you, if you don't have a message out there yourself, it's just a free-for-all. So by starting a process where the, the community knows they can go places to, to learn about what the town's doing, to be able to talk about all of our projects, and new development, this, that, and the other, I think by constantly putting that out there, pretty soon the town citizens will look for it and go to it, so they have information that they can trust. I mean, once we build trust in the communications, I think a lot of that nonsense will go away, and, and if you don't know what's going on, you're going to assume what's going on, and then that's what a lot of times people put out, whether it's the speed limits, or new development, or, or any kind of capital project we do, so, you know, I think in the future, we're going to try real hard to not only market our town, but we're also going to try to, hey, what's going on in town, I mean, not unlike the, dare I say, the journal back in the day, I mean, a lot of times, you know, it had a lot of nickel-dime stuff in it, but you could find out what's going on, HT, you could find out what's going on in your community. We have to have a mechanism and a channel where we, where we put out the information, a lot of people still not going to like it, but at least they'll know exactly what's going on, and, and so.
I think it's going to do both, it will quell some questions, but it will give rise to others, because there's a lot of things out there people just don't know about, that they ask about after the fact, like, why did you guys do that? Well, they can come forward and ask before we do something, or express an opinion before we do it, and sometimes it's like, oh, that's why they're doing it, okay, and then the question is answered before it's ever asked, for some folks, depending upon what it is.
Yeah, I just. It's not going.
No, I just liked how you put it, is it going to quell questions? I think it's going to do both, so I, it was a good question, like how you said that.
It's, we're still, I mean, you're still going to, you're not going to completely get rid of it, because people have other questions, like they ask, who's paying for it, where it's going to come from, where you're getting the money, you know, there's still going to be, it's not going to totally, hopefully it'll help, but it's not going to totally make it go away.
No, I don't think.
You know that.
I think it gives rise to more than what it.
Correct.
Well, I kind of, I don't really use social media, but I might as well, because I, everybody sends me snapshots of everything, so I'd probably be on Facebook more than everybody else now that I think about it. So anyway, it's not going to ever, you know, there, there's still going to be people that are just not happy about the way the world spins, and we can't do anything about that.
If you, if it's put out there, council, first thing they do is go, we need a new council, look what they're doing.
That's why we're talking right now about a communications proposal.
That's why we need to be selling ourselves constantly, and what we're doing for the town, and that, you know, a lot of this misinformation out there is that, you know, they were turning into Bloomington, but then what they're asking for is the same policies and stuff that leads to what Bloomington is, so I think we have a, a role as council members to teach and explain to people how things work, not, I mean, like, it's, it's easy to say, example, no new taxes, I love that, I don't want to raise taxes, I don't, I want to get. I don't want to raise taxes, I don't, I want to give people a tax break. I don't know SB one, how that, but under the old system, I can't say the new system hasn't changed it, there's no physical way for us to do that. But the public would never know that if we didn't explain that to them, because somebody else say, oh, we cut our taxes, and what they meant, they cut their rate, and the assessment went up, so their taxes didn't get cut, so it looks like we're lying to them. We have to, I think we have a duty, if we're on there engaging with people, to explain those nuances, because otherwise, they don't know. And a lot of people are making their statements on the way things should be, and I agree, or they're, but I don't think they realize how structured the way we have to do things are. We can't just do things because we want to.
Well, they look at it a different way than we do. They're looking at it like it's going to cost them more, and, you know...
I'm looking at it the same way.
A lot of people commenting on social media aren't even from here.
Oh, yeah.
No, I, but I agree, it will cost them more, and we need to think that in mind.
Well, I know this, you know this, but us explaining to them doesn't always get through to them, because they're looking at their pocketbook versus what we're telling them. So it's...
Yeah.
It's just rough.
Is there further questions concerning this proposal? Further comments?
I just want to also add that with the new era of stormwater utility within the town, IDM is really pushing us for public involvement and awareness in stormwater quality, and that's one of the items on the storm, our stormwater audit, is how do we reach out to the public for stormwater awareness? So we'd be utilizing it a lot with that as well, so, just to let you know.
All right, further questions, comments, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the communication, actually, to approve the contract, is that what it would be, Darla?
Yes, the proposal by Fields and Company.
To approve the proposal from public, for public relations and marketing by Fields and Company.
I'll second it. Whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move to privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council, not part of our normal agenda? I'm sorry?
I had something for that before the vote that you didn't ask.
I did not.
You're correct. Correct. Anything else?
Okay, any, no one online?
No, sir.
Okay, now we'll move to supervisor comments. Anyone?
I don't think I have anything tonight.
Yes, sir, I just want to make your attention, the memorial service will be, again, on Memorial Day, May the twenty-sixth at eleven AM, sponsored by the Parks Board and the Main Street, who else, Noel? Is there a third one in there somewhere? Several community organizations help out with the flowers and their flags, and so we'll have a, they've got a Coast Guard petty officer going to come and speak this time. Ms. D. Jacob, from the high school, elementary school, will be there, so we'd like to have somebody there if you could. Thank you.
The Ellisville Fire Department, excuse me, was awarded a grant last fall for a UTV. We took possession of that last Friday. It's currently being marked with a patch and so on on it. It will be able to take care of brush fires and so on, like along the trails. It also allows us to transport a person should they get injured on a trail. We'll be able to use it at the Fall Festival, things of that nature, the fireworks, Fourth of July Parade, the Summer Concert Series. So in the past, we've not had anything like this, so it'll be a very valuable tool for us, and didn't cost the taxpayers anything, it was 100% funded by a grant.
Thank you.
Nice.
I will try, if everything's completed and all that, I'll have, try to get Chris to bring it up to the next council meeting so everyone can take a look at it. Thank you so much.
So I wanted to announce that next Saturday, May twenty-fourth, the town of Ellisville in conjunction with B ninety-seven, and I think it's one oh five point one, sorry, I forgot my notes, starting a summer concert series at Marcy Jane Lewis Park, it'll be from six to eight-thirty with a different band every Saturday through July twenty-sixth, I think, will be the last concert, the last Saturday in July. There'll be food trucks, several food trucks, vendors sponsoring the event will have tents so everybody can visit the vendors. Please bring your lawn chairs and enjoy us, we'll be closing Park Street, and I think Kip can explain where it'll be closed a little better, and so, just wanted to remind everybody.
Did we get Taylor Swift booked?
No.
Aren't it?
Police chief, fire chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's basically going to be the same setup as we close down for the Fall Festival, basically.
Beginning at what time?
Six o'clock.
Well, the hard close for the road will be at four-thirty.
We have notices posted early for people that live around there.
Yeah, you just approved the contract for it.
It's on Saturdays.
Well, yes.
We'll be using... Our new communications group to help us get the word out.
That may also warrant a sign or something in the area.
Sure.
Down to council comments. Anyone? Seeing none. No, no other business for the council, we're adjourned.